Seven thirty, let's get the meeting started.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under thy end of this law with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will do roll call, our admin will be doing the minutes from the video. So, Al Born here.
Very good, you're.
Matt McCracken here.
John Gamilke here.
Tony Perry here.
Rusty Neil here.
Weatherford here.
Rebecca Anderson here.
And Mr. Maharis is in jury duty this morning, he actually had to show up, so he will not be joining us this morning. All right. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? The three men will move on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty-three.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty-three as written.
Born seconds.
Seconds, do we have any? Comments, additions, corrections? The hearing none will do a verbal vote?
Born, yes.
Ed, yes.
McCracken, yes.
Gamilke, yes.
Perry, yes.
Neil, yes.
For all of stain.
Anderson, yes.
And item five, public comments, items not on the agenda. The one public, the two public, I don't see any desire to discuss and move on. Unfinished business, if you'll turn to page ten in your package. Uh, this is regarding. The Tava House and. Basically. This is, you know, Mr. Gamilke at the last meeting asked, why is this taking so long? Um, and I think I replied something to the effect that we are government. Um, but uh, we've worked really hard, um, lots of parties, uh, the attorneys. Um, to try to get to this point, so this is kind of. The current as of yesterday. Timeline and um, as I keep poshing in all the parties, particularly Tava. Something else could pop up, it feels like every time we finish the checklist, another checklist item pops up and we just keep knocking them down. So uh, yesterday we got the general application that accompanies the, the basic development plan to planning director. Uh, yesterday, um, and I'll talk a little bit more about this, um. In the uh, chair report, but uh, Mr. Neil and I met with a partner regarding UPHS in the Concar. And uh, again, we'll give you more power on that later. Today, uh, with respect to this, were there several was resolutions, uh, resolution four. Uh, resolution five that are pertaining to this contract. Um, next Thursday, um, the Tava group and city staff will meet to just have a very informal, non-binding discussion. Regarding development in general, the concept there is, you know, obviously, uh, until the contract is approved, nothing is set in stone, but. There needs to be some discussion, and if I go back to the seventh. Uh, deadline for documents to be sent to the city attorney for review, uh, those should already be with the city attorney, so we've met that deadline. And then the thirteenth, next Thursday night, planning commission. Will meet um, by statute, uh, there to uh, be given at least the basic Woodland Station Development Plan. As part of this process, and so they'll see that, it's basically an update to the original twenty twenty-nine plan. Uh, and then on the twentieth, uh, city council, it will be before them to either approve or deny the sale to Tava House properties. If city council approves, then it is scheduled to close on April twenty eighth. So, that's the correct timeline, um. Uh, based on how this process has been going, um, we'll see if that timeline sticks or if it adjusts, so. Any questions on that?
Um, when um, we agreed to, they're going to do a V cup, right? Um, so. I don't see that on there.
It's in the contract, in the packet. Yeah, it's in the, it's, it's a, there's a lot, it's a nine-three page packet, but it is in there, Terry, if you look under the actual contract.
So, but that doesn't need to uh, be accomplished prior to the contract signing.
No, they're taking that risk. Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
You know, Tony, you had mentioned on. December sixth, that we wouldn't uh, do. Uh, any contracts that didn't involve a V cup on the. Woodland Station. Um, this. Um, is it changed, or?
No. No, the, the V cup is considered is. Uh, dealt with within the contract. Yeah, the V cup has to happen, it's gonna be a requirement of planning. In the process, so Tava is dead in the water, unless the V cup is accomplished. Okay. Okay. So we'll turn to page eleven. Uh, this is resolution number three, as you recall, last month, we provided the actual TIF agreement, uh, for AJ's Pizza. Uh, but we had, we didn't get the formal resolution from the attorney yet, so we held that up to do it properly, and so this is just the formal resolution. Um, of the Board of Directors of the Downtown Development Authority approving the redevelopment reimbursement agreement with M and M State LLC. A J A D B A, AJ's Pizza, two fifty East U S Highway twenty-four. Uh, the only caveat that I will give to this is that remember or recall. Uh, we have discussed, uh, I did meet with Fire Chief Lambert and President of the Board Knows from the Fire Department Netco. And uh, the three of us are gonna go meet with the other districts. Uh, that are affected by the DDA to get their concurrence hopefully in excluding. TIF monies from AJ's for, for, to exclude the fire department. Monies in this agreement, remember that's one of our mantras, we've been talking about for over a year, that in the future, TIF agreements would hopefully not include Netco's monies. And uh, we're gonna start that uh, meeting trail here shortly. And there's a packet on the back for you now, um, and we'll see where we get, they know it's not promised, but um. Hopefully, the three of us will be persuasive to the other districts, so. Any questions on AJ's reimbursement agreement, we reviewed the agreement last time, but this is the actual resolution approving it, Derek made a motion.
Born would move to approve resolution number zero-three, series, uh, twenty twenty-three.
And I will second that motion.
There we have a first by Mr. Born, a second by Mr. Neil. Any discussion, questions, clarifying? Fairly straightforward, I, I will say that uh, our attorneys work, uh, very pleased with the work product on the updated for twenty twenty-three TIF agreement, I think it. Uh, protects the DDA, it's more clear to the applicant, um, it's just a better document, so. Okay, well, your roll call vote?
Born, yes.
Good, yes.
McCracken, yes.
Gamilke, yes.
Perry, yes.
Neil, yes.
Weatherford, yes.
Anderson, yes.
If we turn to page twenty-seven. So. This is resolution number four, series. Twenty twenty-three. Now, one of the state statutes with regards to. Conveyance of a public property. Uh, requires that. Uh, and Tava provided a basic. And this was kind of guided by the attorneys, a basic development plan which, um. You know, wouldn't cut muster if they were actually trying to get something to build, uh, it's just then over, it's basically an update to the two thousand nine Development Disposition Agreement. Um, and the council gets, or the planning commission. Basically reviews that and then gives a recommendation or not to the city council. Um, and it's, it's a checklist item that has to happen per statute. And that'll happen next Thursday on the thirteenth, so this is just. The resolution. Updating the Woodland Station Planet Development for twenty twenty-three to City Council, and it starts on page thirty. Uh, it's only a few pages, I think thirty to thirty-four. It's very general, again, it wouldn't be muster, uh, for actually development, but it's to give the planning commission in the council. Uh, a direction as to. What Tom is gonna be doing with the property. So I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution number four, series twenty twenty-three.
Uh, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number. Uh, zero-four, series twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Woodland Park Downtown Development Authority recommending approval of the Woodland Station Planet Development, uh, twenty twenty-three to City Council.
Born will second.
Okay, now discussion. Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote again.
Born, yes.
Good, yes.
McCracken, yes.
The Melky, yes.
Perry, yes.
Neil, yes.
Uh, Weatherford, I'm gonna continue to stay out of this and recuse myself.
Anderson, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. All right, um, so now we're on to page thirty-five. Consideration of resolution number five, series twenty twenty-three, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Woodland Park Station. Or Woodland Park Downtown Development Authority authorizing the sale of Woodland Station property to Tava House Properties LLC. And you may recall, we've done this multiple times over the last year, um, but this is the proper format based on once we started adopting the resolution format to copy or to. Do it properly with the city, um, and in this packet, it's what makes up most of the packet frankly. Um, it is the actual sales contract and. Looking for. Mr. Good on page sixty-one, provision twenty-nine, you'll see in there, um, where we previously agreed to split the cost of the V cup with Baba. That fifty-fifty cost sharing of the expenses, that's actually in the actual contract. The other thing that accompanies this is the addendum to the contract, which remember and recall that, um, it basically. Provided for, um. Some additional conditions, uh, to the contract. Uh, and provided some non-performance costs. Uh, situations where Tava would have to pay a penalty if they did not perform, um, and so that was added to the contract. Uh, and you'll notice these contracts are signed by Tava, but not full by. Uh, the DDA, because we cannot sign until city council approves, if they do. Uh, and then on page seventy-one. Uh, the planned developments included again. Uh, then on page seventy-six, uh, another thing that was requested from the DDA attorney, the Tava agree to, which, which is a performance deed of trust. Uh, for those of you who are not familiar with that, it's basically a legal mechanism if. This goes into a dispute, or if the DDA or the city wants to claw this property back because of non-compliance. Uh, the performance deed of trust is another legal arrow, if you will, to help make that process, that foreclosure, if you will, a little bit easier. So it's again, a good thing to protect the DDA and city of Woodland Park. And then on page eighty-four, uh, is the actual general application that we provided to planning yesterday, and all it is, is basically a rider. To the twenty twenty-three plan of development to help, uh, planning kind of keep their paperwork organized, because it's. Quite a chore, I can, I mean, based on what I've learned in this process is. It's hard to keep all the paperwork straight. It's really easy to get this stuff messed up, and I thought we had a lot of paperwork in my business, so. Uh, so that's basically the contract, and so, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number five, series twenty twenty-three. Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Woodland Park Downtown Development Authority authorizing the sale of Woodland Station property to Tava House Properties LLC.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number zero-five, series twenty twenty-three, um, as stated by the chairman.
Born will second.
Discussion, questions, a little comment, uh, I, I just want the other board members to know that. Over the past couple of weeks since the last meeting, there has been a lot of.
Meetings that, that Tony and I, um. Have had with the attorney, and it was to ensure, and going back with Marcus. And it's to comply with each and every one of the conditions, I, I know our chairman just laid them out. But I will attest that we did have all of those discussions, we carefully went through the documents with Mr. McCaskin to ensure that. My concern was the risk to the citizens, that the callbacks were all in place, and they are there now exactly as we have discussed, so I'm attesting to what. Um, Chairman Perry has just informed all of us as he went through the document, I agree with everything he did say, be fair to vote.
I guess, uh, the other thing I'll throw in is, um. Tava has. Uh, agreed to quite a few things, they have not, um. Insisted on very many protections for themselves, I'm surprised they're still here, frankly. Um, I'm glad they're still here, but I'm surprised, and I don't know that my risk tolerance is as great as theirs, frankly, uh, personally. Um, but this is the next step, uh, after we vote on this, assuming we're going to vote the affirmative, uh, it's basically in the hands of city council. Uh, all of these checklist items, uh, not only followed state statute, but also addresses the fair value question. Which has been brought up on several junctures, uh, and I'm assuming that'll come up the city council again and be addressed there as well. Uh, but we have, uh, as Mr. Neil said. Made painstaking. Clarity that everything's been checked off, everything is moving forward, um. There was a little interesting thing with UPHS yesterday, which, which again, I'll talk about in a minute, but, um. As soon as we vote on this, we're done, and we're gonna sit back and wait, it's, it's not in our hands anymore, uh. And it's up to the city council to weigh in and make the decision, and. Um, as I've warned Tava, uh, you know, it's a few weeks until the twentieth, and there could be four more bombs that. Get placed in front of us before then, we'll knock them down as best we can if they emerge, um. But, um, I'm not a betting person, but we'll just see what happens on the twenty, so we'll go with the roll call, if there's no other discussion, Mr. Born?
Born, yes.
Good, no.
McCracken, yes.
Gamilke, yes.
Perry, yes.
Neil, yes, and a thank you to, uh, our planning director and Mr. McCaskin for all their hard work.
Weatherford recused.
Anderson, yes.
Thank you, motion passes, all right. Uh, public comment regarding new business? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on, I am going to. I wanna go last, we're next to us, so, uh, Presrur's report, Rebecca, can you start on page eighty-nine?
Okay, this month we have just two invoices, we've got, um. An invoice for our attorney, Mr. McCaskin, for two thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. And we also have a invoice, um, from Rebecca Allen, our admin, for two hundred dollars.
I would entertain a motion to ratify the two expenses as communicated by Presrur Anderson.
Born would. Move to ratify the two invoices that have been submitted and proceed to payment.
You have a second?
I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Any questions? Hearing none, Mr. Born?
Born, yes.
Good, yes.
McCracken, yes.
Gamilke, yes.
Perry, yes.
Neil, yes.
Weatherford, yes.
Anderson, yes.
All right. Okay, um. Board member reports, is there any board member that wishes to report? On anything?
Yep. Um, Matt McCracken, um, I've got a. Kind of a melting pot of things going on in my life right now, and I am gonna have to step down from the board, so I'm putting in for my resignation. Sorry, but I've had a lot of fun, and it's been really nice and awesome being part of this team, but, um. Gonna have to step out for a bit and sort things out in my life and, uh, before I can get plugged back into things, so.
Understood, yeah, so I think from, uh, if you could just, uh, send myself and Rusty as the secretary. Uh, an email will suffice, notating that, that'd be great. We appreciate your service, and I wanna make it clear, uh. Uh, I've seen other things in town with respect to various boards, remember, we're volunteer citizens and life happens. And, uh, no one should be judged if they have to make a life decision that's in the best interest of their business, their family, period. So we appreciate Mr. McCracken's time and effort, and, um, he has been signaling this for a couple of months, so it's not out of the blue. Um, uh, once we accept his resignation, well, we don't have to accept it per charter, basically, he is resigned after this meeting, and, um. It's up now, this board has nothing to do with appointing a replacement, it's completely the city council's purview, so. Uh, to make that clear, anyone out there in the community that's interested in serving, uh, let Ms. Claire at the city know, I'm sure she'll be posting it. And then the city council will take up whether they're going to appoint someone or not, so that's how the process works, so again, thank you, Matt. Appreciate it, um, I think when you got recruited, uh, you were like. I don't know if I'm qualified, and I said, uh, we just need adult, rational adults who are willing to objectively weigh the information. And do the best job possible, and I think you've done it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good, right. Anyone else? This time? Okay. Hearing none, uh, I'll just move to board report, well, actually, Mr. McCaskin, are you on the line?
I am, uh, Chair Perry, good morning.
Good morning, is there anything you would like to, uh, add to, um, our discussion, uh, today?
Maybe, uh, very, very quickly, um, I, I'll provide a, uh, just a short, uh, update on a, a pending. Bill, uh, in the Colorado Legislature that may be of interest to, uh, the board, uh, this is Senate Bill, uh, twenty-three, one seventy-five, it's my understanding that. Uh, this passed out of committee, I believe, um. It was either, uh, Friday or, or yesterday, uh, fairly soon, but this is a, uh, this, this is a bill that, that affects, uh, DDAs, uh, directly. And I think as many of you may be aware, uh, currently state law allows it, a downtown development authority. Uh, to, to have a thirty-year, uh, period of, of tax increment, uh, collection. With, with an option for one, uh, twenty-year extension. Uh, for, uh, what, what this bill does is that for, for property tax revenue only. The bill creates automatic and recurring additional twenty-year extension periods during which an authority may use. A TIF arrangement unless the city council, in this case, the governing body, the municipality opts out of the extensions. And that first additional extension period be, you know, begins upon the expiration of the original fifty-year period. Um, and. Yeah, state law also, uh, states that during that twenty-year extension, the initial one, if it's triggered. Fifty percent of the incremental revenue during that twenty-year extension period is allocated to a special fund of the municipality. That created the authority to be used to finance projects within the boundaries of the DDA. The other fifty percent of the incremental revenue is allocated to other governmental entities that levy property tax or ad, ad valorem taxes within the boundaries of the authority. Unless the city and the other taxing districts reach an alternative a- agreement. So this bill also clarifies that, that during those subsequent twenty-year extension periods. Uh, the, that, that default split of fifty-fifty, fifty percent to the special fund of the city. Fifty percent to the balance of the, uh, taxing, uh, districts would be continued, a- again, unless there's an alternative arrangement that is reached by agreement. So I just thought I would bring that bill, uh, to, to the attention of the board, uh, uh, given that it has passed out of committee, uh, it's, it's looking like this will likely be. Ad- adopted this session, um, if I become aware of, of, uh, the bill having been executed by the governor or otherwise being effective, I'll, uh, be happy to shoot an email. Uh, to, uh, to, to that effect and, and, or, or perhaps just, you know, include a very short update at, at a, at a future, uh, meeting.
Yeah, Mr. McCack, McCaskin, can you, um, confirm my perception on, uh, SB twenty-three, one seventy-five, that. Uh, that's, the decisions on the extension, extension still remains with the local entity, which in our case, the city council.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, one of our, that was actually gonna be one of my board report, uh, one of our representatives did reach out to get. Uh, to ask whether we wanted to weigh in on the extension, uh, this bill seems to have a lot of momentum for it to get passed. Uh, and from my perspective, because it's, did not take away local, the local decision-making. Uh, you know, I chose not to weigh in as the DDA chair, so.
All right, well, I, I'm sorry, I stole some of your thunder.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay, and I'm appreciative that you're on top of it, that's awesome.
Okay, all right, take care.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, the only other thing for this month, um. I am working on, uh, a report that I talked about last time, but it's not ready for this meeting, um. I will say that, um, last week, one of our city council members, not Mr. Neil, was noted, was contacted by, uh, Mr. Mark Neck. Uh, he's a local realtor, and I know him very well, he's really engaged in historical, uh, historic. Committees, uh, he leads the committee up in Dubai for the depot up there, the train depot, trying to get that going, and by the way, he reports that they may have a grant. To actually get that building rehabbed and turned into a, not a museum, because that triggers all kinds of governmental requirements, but, uh, and experience or something to that effect. Um, uh. Interpreted, yes, uh, Ms. Larson had asked them to, uh, meet with us because she was concerned that we were about to sell the property, um. And as you recall, possibly six months ago, I met, I went over and met with UPHS and met with, uh, uh, one of their board members, and, um. They basically said they weren't aware of any deal, um, and they had no budget, um. Mr. Mark Neck kind of communicated the same thing, there's really no budget, uh, he was told there is a deal. Uh, we haven't been able to find a deal, so he's gonna go back and talk to Ms. Larson, bottom line is, I think the understanding we left with is whether. Uh, the Tava contract is approved or not, uh, it's in the DDA's best interest to have discussions with UPHS, they're a great organization. Uh, with respect to, um, uh, in particular, he believed, or he. in particular, he believed, or he was told that the UPHS was part owner of the cog. We don't believe that to be true. We can't find anything official to that effect, but that said, they're interested in helping with the cog if they can. As you recall, Tava is committed to working with that. It's been classified. He even admitted it's not historic because it has nothing to do with Woodland Park. It's just a pretty shiny car that's on our property. So anyway, so there will be more discussion there, and we committed to, again, whether Tava contract closes or whether it doesn't, there needs to be some discussions, and UPHS could add value to that process. And Tava has indicated that they're very open to working with UPHS in that scenario, so. Yeah, the only other thing is, again, thanks to this board, thanks to Mr. McCaskin, a lot of people at the city, Karen, Michael, the city attorney, Nina. It's been quite eye opening for me in terms of how these processes work. Not in a good way necessarily. I wouldn't necessarily want to have to do that job every day, but I'm glad that we're here today. And we'll sit back and wait and see what happens this month. So that's the end of my report. Anything else, anyone else from the way?
Just a comment that I, I did search the, the memory stick in the files, and the only purchase agreement that we do have on record is the purchase agreement between the DDA and the Manitou and Pike's Peak Railway Company that's dated November fifteenth, twenty nineteen, that transfers the cog to the DDA. But there is nothing that shows that on, on our records that we have, that it has been transferred to the U-Pass Historical Society or anybody. So that's, that's why Mark is trying to reach out to see if there might be another document. I was in attendance with the chairman when we asked him to reach out to former chairman.
Yes, yeah. So that's, we have a lot of TBD coming up, and it's going to take some open, honest dialogue out exposed to the public as to how this is going to shake out, but I am confident that Tava is committed to making it work and to honor and respect the commitment of Mr. Carter to the honoring his wife. We also did a little bit of basic brainstorming, you know, with respect to the cog rail. It has nothing to do with the history of Woodland Park. But if we step up to the twenty thousand foot view and think about Manitou and Pike's Peak and Woodland Park and coming up the pass and to divide into Cripple Creek, it could be an interesting marketing story to tourists. And, you know, it's a cool car. It's bright. You know, it can be leveraged in some positive ways. He mentioned that one of the other, there were three cars originally. One of them was down at the little museum that's back behind CNC Sand in Carraway Springs. He said that every once in a while they rent it out for a birthday party, so they're trying to brainstorm of how they could put that car to use. I know Tava has been brainstorming. How can they leverage it to the benefit of the community and, and make it something that works for the property? So we'll wait and see. So there's a lot of TBD and again, a lot of again, kudos to Tava for having a risk profile that allows them to navigate the coming time, assuming it gets approved, assuming the contract gets approved. And we'll be doing it out in the open and to the betterment of the community. So thank you. Yes, Mr. Good.
Well, I'm just a couple of, to my two cents, I, I don't remember how it went down exactly, but we were approached about that car and offered it for free, transported it. So the DDA agreed to that. And it seemed like a good fit, even though it's just a shiny object that's sitting on there with the background of Pike's Peak. Present there, it seemed like a very appropriate thing to do and a public improvement on that property that made it just turned it from the field. And there's many, many people that utilize it. So it's, and then when Mr. Carter stepped in and offered to pay for it, it was a no brainer. So I don't know that there's any documentation per se that claims ownership, but its intent from the beginning was to purchase it and DDA being owner.
Oh, I don't disagree. I think if you go back and look at the timing, in two thousand nineteen, the DDA was negotiating with that lot, with the Tava group at that time. And then all of a sudden, the cog showed up on the lot they were negotiating with. So that's why they walked away in two thousand nineteen. But I agree with you, Mr. Good, that it's clear what the intent is. It's clear that Mr. Carter stepped up and put that expense out, and it's clear that Tava, if they want to move it, if they get the, if the contract closes, it's been made clear that they're responsible for that, and they're responsible for honoring the intent of the DDA. So that's all. We've talked about that over the last year, and that's their intent. And I neglected, did you want to say anything today, Mr. Weaver, or no? Okay. So, yeah, I agree. The intent has always been there, and we will honor that intent, and we expect Tava to honor that intent if they in fact do get the contract, or if the contract does close.
And Jerry, I'm not sure if you misunderstood. I wasn't saying that there's a question mark on who owns it. The, the DDA, we have documentation. We own that car, and that means technically the city owns that car because we're bored on it. So, and I spoke to Suzanne Leclerc yesterday, and she recognizes that the city does own that technically.
Yeah. Yeah. So that is, that will be dealt with again out in the open, and I, we have made first contact with Mr. Carter, but the mantra has been, let's wait and see what happens with Tava. The contract is either going to close or not close, and so we'll have discussions and make sure that everything proceeds appropriately. So everything in the best interest of the community is what we're trying to accomplish. So thank you. Anything else? Okay, wow. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Born moves to adjourn.
I'll second that.
We are adjourned.
You will second that one as your last official act.
That was a quickie.
McCracken, I second that.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Great. Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Marcus.